September sixteenth meeting of the Coney Planning Commission. We are a recommending body of the O'Conne Board of Commissioners. Decisions made tonight on rezoning requests and other issues will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for final action. Tonight's agenda and sign up sheets were out back. I've gotten them here. If you've got your names on here, if you didn't get your name on here, I'll try to give you an opportunity to raise your hand and come forward. The O'Conne Planning Department staff, this is how we're gonna do this today. The planning staff will present the report and their recommendations on each request. We'll ask the representative or the petitioner or the petitioner's representative come up and say what they would like to say to the commissioners. We'll ask for public input either and we'll start off with the public input that might be in favor of their request. We'll limit those, the petitioner's representative and the petitioner and the positive comments to about twenty minutes. Then we'll give twenty minutes to anybody that wants to raise issues with the request. Finally, I'll close the public comment section and I'll bring it up to the commissioners to get their questions answered. And then, once they run out of questions, I'll ask for a motion and we'll have a vote at that time. We ask that when you come up to the podium, please introduce yourself and give us a address. We ask you to direct your comments to the planning commissioners up here and not to other people in the audience. If we have multiple speakers saying similar things, you can do a ditto and then just point out the additional things you want to bring to our attention. And then we ask the audience to extend courtesy of not applauding or commenting from their seats on any of the speakers. And with that, commissioners, I'll ask you to look at the minutes from last meeting. I checked the date. Now, I'll ask if there's any other revisions or corrections that need to be made to last month's minutes. Don't have anybody getting my attention, so I'll urge you to make a motion if you feel motivated. Maybe we adopt the meeting to provide, okay, Chris is. Nick for second, and so everybody that agrees with Chris and Nick, please raise your right hand. All right, unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Your first case this evening is rezoned P twenty-three zero-two-eight-seven Kristen and Philip Gibson, applicants and owners. This is located at Hog Mountain Road and Garrett Road. And the parcel number is A zero-one zero-seven-six-B-A. It's currently zoned AR in the suburban neighborhood character area. And the request is to change the conditions of the previous zoning case, P twenty-zero-one-four-three, which is on the property two AR. The request to change is to remove condition number three, which states, "A one-foot no-access easement on proposed track one along Georgia Highway fifty-three shall be recorded at the time of administrative subdivision." This is the recorded plat that shows a one-foot no-access easement at this location along Highway fifty-three as required as condition of zoning. This is the concept plan that is proposed to remove that one-foot no-access and allow access at this location to the residential structure in the rear. The history is in finding of facts. This is in your staff report, but I'll briefly go over these. The property was rezoned AR on October sixth, twenty-twenty to create a two-lot subdivision. There was a dirt driveway accessing Highway fifty-three that existed at the time of the rezoning. It was used as a driveway for a residential home that was on the property since nineteen eighty-five. Previous property owner Stephen Dickinson applied to build a one-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot garage on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. This is the aerial photo dated January seventh of twenty-twenty-two, which shows the garage was already under construction at the time the garage permit was applied for in April. Again, just a slightly larger version of the same photo showing the structure under construction. And again, this is the tax assessor photo from four thirteen, again, showing the structure with no building permits. Comments were issued by the planning on the garage permit application on May seventh, and the homeowner never resubmitted items to address the comments. Current owners acquired the property May twentieth and twenty-twenty-two. According to tax assessor records and dated photos, current owners continued construction work without a permit after they acquired the property. Tax assessor documented on October twenty-seventh, twenty-two that an additional single-family home was constructed without permits on the property with a size of one-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-nine square feet. A notice of violation was issued April twenty-fourth of twenty-twenty-four that determined the structure was built on the property without first obtaining a permit, a building permit. The tax assessor documented the residential structure was built without permits in twenty-twenty-two and again in July of seventeen of twenty-twenty-four. The staff analysis indicates the proposed guest house could be permitted and meet UDC requirements if the applicant extends the driveway for the primary residence to the rear of the property. There is a clear plus or minus twenty-three foot between the HVAC unit on the side of the primary residence to the side property line to extend the existing driveway. If that is done, the change of zoning conditions and variance on a guest house driveway would not be necessary. This is the concept plan where we show the measurement between the property line and the HVAC unit. This is the existing driveway in this location that by code should be extended to access any accessory structure on the property. These are the architectural renderings, which seem to match the photos that are of the construction. And staff recommends denial based on the staff analysis as previously mentioned.
All right, thank you. And so on the sign up sheet, it looks like Mr. Porter, you're gonna represent?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Stanton Porter. My address is seventy-three Church Street in Winder. That's my office address. I'm a resident of O'Conne County here and tonight representing Kristen and Philip Gibson. I've known both of them, particularly Kristen grew up here in O'Conne County with her. And want to run through a few things about what they're trying to do. Also give a little more context for why they are here and the history of their involvement in the property itself. And so, as Guy said, he gave a good outline of the location itself. This is just down the road from T's Corner and Striplands on Hog Mountain Road. If you go further down, it's where Dove Creek is. You can see the constructed, this is just from Google Earth here. And you can see this is the Gibson's residence here. The drive, this is, this was been here a long time. In fact, on, this is on Google Earth, they actually, at one time, it may have had a road name. It was, as Guy mentioned, was the driveway to an old mobile home or old house that was here prior to the split into two lots in the building of these. But it actually is, and on the recorded plat, it actually shows this connecting over. It was called Bridge Road. And so, in short, what you're gonna see we're asking is the Gibsons purchased this. They want Ms. Gibson here, like her mother-in-law, Mr. Gibson's seventy-year-old mother to move into this. And they'd like to be able to access it on this drive here. It's existing with a culvert. They didn't add this. The builder didn't add this. It's been there, but they want to do it the right way. And we're gonna talk about how things weren't done the right way before they bought this property. But they do want to straighten it out and clean it up. And we're also gonna show you that simply trying to access the, this back building by coming here, I think this gives you a good image. It's, while technically may be possible, it both, from the amount of work and grading that'll have to be done and also aesthetically, it's not desirable and they really just don't want to get that route. You already saw the site plan. As said, that, this is the existing drive. I'm gonna show you some pictures here in a second to a guest house that's there. This is the Gibson's house where they live with their two children and their access is off Garrett Road there. So, I want to take just a second and talk about how we got to this situation. The Gibsons purchased this property in twenty-twenty-two, May of twenty-twenty-two is when they closed. You saw some photos of some construction being completed after they closed. I didn't put this slide up on there, but when they purchased this, the the building, that the accessory structure was under construction. It was not done, an amendment to the contract, and I'm just reading from this, said that the both parties acknowledged there may be a delay in the shipment of the windows and French doors. And this was an amendment they signed at closing. And so, any construction that you saw after or pictures of work done after May of twenty-twenty-two, when the Gibsons purchased the property, was just the builder and seller. The person that built the property was also the builder and they lived there a little bit and then sold it. It was them fulfilling an obligation that they had under the contract to complete that building. Now, no way did the Gibsons know that this building was built without permits or without the, the sort of okay from the planning department. What I have shown here for you is the seller property disclosure statement from when they went under contract. This is Mr. Dickinson, who's the only, the only owner when it was split. He lived there. He was building that building and I've highlighted, I know it's hard to see, but what he represented and we intend as we get this resolved. He checked under the no box. It says, "Has there been any work where, that required a building permit that was not obtained?" He said, "No." There's other questions that also would indicate that, you know, if, if anything was needed to be okayed by the county, that he said, "No," like he's done everything that he was supposed to. But clearly, we don't dispute this building was built without a building permit. We saw where an application was submitted, comments were made and nothing else happened. He just sold the property anyway and I guess hoped that things would work itself out and obviously didn't. I also want to note that the building, that the work that was done, it's just the exterior that's completed. It is completely unfinished studs inside. The Gibsons have not finished it. It's not livable. And so, in terms of correcting it, they understand there's gonna be some additional fees to get that building permit, sort of pay a factor of it to get it properly done. Also, some inspections, engineer work to make sure that, that building codes were met. And if these requests are granted in terms of the variances in, which we also have not before you tonight, but when we come back in front of the commissioners. But the rezone, their intent is to finish it out as a in-law suite for Ms. Gibson's mother-in-law. I want to show you, this is just a street view. This is of that, so if I go back, sorry, to right here, this is the entrance, what was Bridge Road at one time. This is what it looks like. You can see there's a culvert that goes under here. That's been there. That was not, Mr. Dickinson, the prior owner, did not put that in there. This is the curb cut and then the entrance, there's a gate in the fence. And so, our intent in the request tonight is to remove that condition of the no-access easement so that you can access the, you can see it right in through the trees here. I picked a picture where there weren't quite as many leaves. So you can see the guest house, unfinished guest houses right here. And so, the intent is to have, you know, one, maybe two times a day, Ms. Gibson's mother-in-law is gonna come in here versus driving through their backyard. This image, you can see where their house is. And looking at where, I guess, planning says that there is room along the side of their house to put a driveway. I think that this image, Ms. Gibson went out and took it this weekend. You can see, this is their driveway for their primary residence. They've got a little bit of parking area for an extra car and a golf cart here. This is the accessory building that, that we're talking about. And so, what, you know, the property slopes up here and, and we don't dispute that technically, yes, you could come in, do some significant grading here, retaining wall, again, all quite expensive, and make a drive that then goes a paved driveway that would eliminate any parking here directly through their backyard to that residence. And so, we don't dispute that that is technically possible, but do believe that there, there is a hardship that would certainly eliminate some, some value that they have to their property of, you know, having this area here, also aesthetically, plus the, the expensive retaining wall. If we look going the other way, the other issues could be some potential water and stormwater issues. This is a low spot. We paved, there's a drain here that drains out. If you had that drive come up here or come right through their backyard, your unsightly concrete driveway through their backyard, plus having some potential water issues with their house there. And so, we just think that, that there is a, there's reason and justification for the modification of this condition, particularly when you balance against why is that condition there? And I think that is the county wants to limit the number of access points on fifty-three. And I understand that. We don't want to do a bunch of houses that have their individual driveways along fifty-three there. You, it's could be unsafe or could create additional traffic. There's a unique case going on here where we're having a, a small in-law suite with very minimal additional traffic. I don't, I think that there's justification to differentiate this from other potential cases in the future based on the situ, how the, the facts that we got to this situation. And so, I do think that there's, there's reason to do this and also without setting some sort of dangerous precedent going forward. I'm gonna show you what it looks like. This is a picture from when they, they were putting in the, those windows. Per that contract, the builder had to come back and put the windows in because they were just not there yet. Again, the Gibsons had no idea that this was not permitted, not okayed by the county. It was, it really was only when they went to go finish it out and apply for septic permit to put in a septic system for this building, learned that the building was never permitted and that this driveway that's there would not be allowed. And so, this is the, the old road, the old driveway. You can see the gate that we saw the image from earlier. This is what they're, they would like her mother-in-law to be able to drive down to the house. So again, just showing you what our site plan is. It's, it's eliminate that one-foot no-access here so that you can drive into this residence. Like I said, I, I just think that from a very technical approach, you could do a lot of work and put in a drive there. But for the, the homeowner's interest, it, it just, it's not, it's not that it's just hard and expensive. It's just gonna really take away from the house. And I'm gonna have her talk about that itself. And so, think that the situation warrants this, that Ms. Gibson and her husband, they didn't, when they learned of this, they didn't do like the builder they bought this from and just finish it out on their own and just hope that the county didn't do anything. That this was filed and, and worked on before any notice of violation. I know that, that Guy mentioned that there was a notice. This, this case we had met with and worked on before and it's not, it wasn't filed in response to a notice of violation. And so, they're trying to bring it up to standard to meet the requirements of the county, pay whatever the penalties and fees are for that building permit. And so, would ask that you recommend approval of eliminating that one-foot no-access easement. So, we'll have Ms. Gibson come and talk a little bit about her personal experience with the situation.
All right. My name's Kristen Gibson and my address is ten thirty Garrett Road. And so, as Stanton mentioned, I am the homeowner of the property. Just backing up, like you said, we bought the property in May of twenty-twenty-two. My father-in-law passed away suddenly in June of twenty-one. And so, there became an immediate need. My mother-in-law lives in the mountains by herself. There's no family close by. So it became immediate need. We're the only, she has three sons. We're the only, you know, family that has small kids and in a life place to be able to bring her with us. So we put our house in Dalzmore Plantation on the market and we started the journey to look for a house, whether it had an unfinished basement, whatever. The really, if I had my agent here, she would tell you our journey was to find a house that would fit our needs, but also would have somewhere for my mother-in-law to live. So you can imagine when we found this property with this opportunity, we were like ding ding ding, you know, she gets some privacy. We can finish it out to her needs. Like it really just, we were really excited about the property. And even on that listing for the house, it was like your own private drive and this great opportunity and the way it was sold to us. So I sent, mentioned, you know, I came down, I pulled the, well, I didn't pull anything, but I attempted to pull and start the conversation for septic and was immediately met with, "This isn't a permitted structure." So as a homeowner, you can imagine that I panicked a little bit. "What do you mean this isn't a permitted structure?" And, and kind of started the journey that we've been on and, and have been using Stanton to kind of guide us through the process. Like he said, we really do have a desire to do this the complete one-hundred percent right way for the purpose of the county, for the purpose of us as a homeowner and protecting our value, of course. And then, of course, for the purpose of my mother-in-law who needs to live closer to family. Like I said, she's in her seventies and, and living by herself in the mountains. So we're, we're asking, I know we're asking to bend the rule, but as you can see from the property, having that drive come up the side of the house really put the financial burden aside because that's not even really what I'm concerned with at this point. It just doesn't, that goes right by my bedroom window and, you know, all things that maybe you probably wouldn't be concerned about, but imagine sleeping in a car driving right by your window. And so, just under the pretense that we were sold a property with a vision that we didn't know was right. I know that's not any of your problem and it really, you know, is mine. But we're just asking for that, that variance so that we can get the approval. Like Stanton mentioned, we're talking about one to two times, you know, that she might go in and out of that driveway, but just gives her privacy, gives us privacy, but also allows her safely to live with us. So we're willing to do whatever we need to do, whatever fines, whatever steps we have to take because we want to do it the right way based off the rules of the county. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. So, I don't have anybody that signed up in opposition, but I'll ask if there's anybody here that needs to speak on behalf or against. All right. I don't see anybody jumping up or getting my attention, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment section. We'll, as these guys have questions, we'll ask various people to come back up, answer some of those questions.
Mr. Herring, may I ask, do you, do you know if the road that he has indicated, the right-of-way was part of the county right-of-way and, and if it was ever abandoned?
No, the, the Bridge Road that he mentioned, no, sir. We don't have that on record as being a county road.
Thank you. And isn't there something about the one-foot easement? Is there some particular reason that you asked for a one-foot easement on the driveway?
In, in this instance, yes, that was a condition of zoning in order to, as Stanton mentioned, to preclude any conflicts of entrance and exit onto Highway fifty-three. It's a very busy, both state route and county road that, that staff deemed appropriate to put a, a one-foot no-access and the board agreed with the original reason.
Oh, the driveway that comes off fifty-three?
Yes, sir.
I do remember when that trailer was there. That driveway has been there for life. They didn't put it in, the other builder didn't put it in. It's like been there forever and a day, as far as we know.
Yeah, as far as we know, the mobile home was nineteen eighty-five, so yes, sir.
Yeah, been there for a long time.
At least that long.
Yeah. Do the Gibsons own both tracks?
No, sir. Just, just this one.
Well, they don't own track one. It's an easement coming through track one into track two.
This is a single track that is owned by the Gibsons.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, I was confused about. I thought there was an empty track in between Gibson and fifty-three. Yeah, but there's not. The way our rules work, Gibson wouldn't have enough acreage to take their track and split it and make two tracks out of the first track.
That's correct. That, that's right. I believe it's a three, can't quite, maybe it's two-point-four. Yes, sir. Two-point-four-eight, that's correct. So it's currently zoned AR.
You may or may not know this guy. I'm looking at the survey dated November twelfth, twenty-twenty. My assumption is that this would be part of the current title. This is an easement, so this should be part of what the title, you should say, "Hey, there's an easement here." It's kind of independent, all of the permitting issues with that, with the home, with the second, second building. I mean, I am sympathetic, but it's pretty clear here on this survey that there's a ported easement that says you cannot put a drive, that driveway is non-protected. I think that's independent of permitting, just looking at the question. Yeah, I see that. I just wanted to make sure that this was there well before it was purchased.
All right. Any other questions like that?
I'd like to ask a question of the owner or the representative.
You want to use the question nail beside it? And you can decide who answers it. I I wish your mother, mother-in-law a long life, but what happens to the house once she doesn't live there anymore?
No, I mean, it's a, it's a great question. I wish her a long life too. As you mentioned, I mean, there's never a gold subdivide. I mean, we extend tend for it to be a part of our property. You know, I've got two young children that are going to go off to college one day. My parents are still alive. I mean, it really is the intent to keep it as part of our family and just use it for our needs as we see fit till we sell the property one day.
Right. Activity up here is slowing down. You got vanilla?
Yeah, I got it. I got, since this driveway was existing and we added a no foot we don't have anything in our rules that if we do that, that driveway pipe ought to be dug up and gone before we
No, sir. Right. No, sir. There's no requirement of that. No. But again, this
Confusing. I'm just saying I feel for the Gibsons because if it was removed and then they want to put it back, boy, that'd be a different story. But we don't have the rule if we put a no access on something that if access is on it, it's got to be torn up. That way, nobody can be have mutual mystification about how they're going to get on their property.
But that's correct. We we do not have a requirement that it be removed. And what exacerbates this situation obviously is it's a G dot road and G dot does not have that either.
But on other roads, the road department now has an app where you can report culverts that aren't in use. You want to pull around and there's
There's a whole bunch of them, I'm afraid. Yeah.
Understand. That that was my question.
Yes.
All right. We got our questions that we can deal with drained out or and I'll, at this point, before we motion or vote, I'll remind everybody that this has to go to the Board of Commissioners for its final decision. But at this time, I'll start fishing for a motion, please. You have another question, you can bring it up, but it's time to start thinking about closing this one up.
Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll break the ice here and start the discussion. While I'm sympathetic to the situation, I think it sets a difficult precedence for the future. And so I'm going to recommend that we follow the staff position and recommend denial.
Jim has made a recommendation, recommendation to deny. Let me get a sec. Chris is going to second. So is there any last discussion on that before we vote? Okay. Well, let me ask for hands, right hands, please, if you agree with the motion to deny. And you disagree. So that will go on up to the Board of Commissioners as a denial and you'll have a chance to speak to them on the subject. All right. So with that, I'll ask Mr. Guy to come back for twenty-four zero one one six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is rezoned P twenty-four, P twenty-four zero one one six. Sapphire Property Rentals LLC applicant and owner. This is located on Monroe Highway, Highway seventy-eight. It's parcel B zero two zero two five. It's currently zoned A G in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the request is rezoned the seventeen point three eight seven acre property from A G to R one for a single-family residential development. This is a recorded plat in your application, a concept plan showing the proposed eight residential lots. Architectural renderings submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. And number four, all dwelling units shall have facades consistent with the architectural features shown on submitted drawing. Number R S zero six zero one two zero with primarily brick, stone, or lap siding consisting of painted wood, lap, or fiber cement board siding. No vinyl or metal siding shall be allowed. Each single-family detached unit shall include at least a two-car garage. And number five, the architectural elevation shall be approved by the plan director with no house models having the same facade adjacent to each other so as not to be repetitive. Number six, each new dwelling shall install two street trees, a minimum two-inch caliper at the time of planting prior to issuance of a C O. And number seven, all after sidewalk, driveway, and house are constructed on each lot, all remaining disturbed areas on each lot shall be sodded prior to C O. Disturbed area within the right of way shall be sodded if stand of permanent, if a stand of permanent grass is not established prior to final plat. Thank you.
All right. So do I have the representatives, owners representative or the applicants representative?
Good evening, everybody. I appreciate y'all hearing our request. My name's Adam Kirk. I'm the landscape architect, the designer on the project. Rob Scott, the owner of the property and developer is here if you have any questions that I can answer. Is there any way to get that site plan put back up? There we go. Like Guy mentioned, we're requesting to rezone from Ag to R one. There'll be eight lots, eight new lots at the end of the project, but two existing homes will remain. So there'll be six new homes, if that makes sense. Lot one and lot eight have homes on them now. So there'll be four or, yeah, six additional lots, six new homes. And then all of, I mean, all applicable codes would be followed on the L D P's middle. So did y'all have any questions for me?
We'll get to that. Now, we just, at this point, we're just looking for any thing you want us to be aware of. And then if these guys have questions later, we'll we'll call you back up, please.
Okay.
All right. So Mr. Scott, want to say anything on the subject or just know that you're out there to be questioned? Okay. So with that, I'll go ahead and ask if there's anybody who wants to bring any other issues with this request for or against. I'll go ahead and open the floor. But I don't see anybody wanting to jump up, so nobody needs to come to the mic. I'll go ahead and close the public comment and go ahead and bring it up here to these guys for discussion. Guy, I'll buy them a little bit of time to think and ask you a question or two. The cul-de-sac, I I don't see any mention of the cul-de-sac being turned over to the county, so it will remain a private, fully operated cul-de-sac even for the eight lots.
I believe it's proposed as a public road.
Size-wise, it looked like it was up to our fire trucks and bus standards, so.
Well, that that'll be determined during the development process.
Right. The cul-de-sac may revert to the county or maintenance in the future.
Well, they they are proposing a new local street to go into the development.
And then finally, HOA, I don't see it. Do they have a requirement to make an HOA?
The the code does, yes.
But it, but it doesn't have to be a condition.
Yes.
Okay, understood. Guys, I was buying you a little bit of time with those off-the-wall questions. Anybody have any questions of their own?
I got one, forgot. What makes this eight-lot subdivision unique is not to have a D seven?
Well, it still may need to have one. That is obviously, this is not shown here, but it'll still have to meet code. And this is also a G dot route. So they'll be involved with that permitting as well.
So even though it's not shown, if there's supposed to be one.
That's right.
Got to build one.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else?
Yes. That's right.
All right. Any others? Started early, we can stay late. All right. So hold it. I gotta get my pen out now. All right.
I'll second.
Jeff's making a motion to approve and Matt's second.
Just for clarification, the chairman's staff conditions.
Yes, with staff conditions, I assume, and as per the written to approve with conditions. I have first and a second. And now I'll ask, please with your right hand, raise. That's easier to count, that's for now. Okay. With that, we are finished with the different requests and therefore we're for anybody that needs to leave to leave. And now we take care of some business. I need my nominating committee to please take the floor and tell us what you've got for us.
So Matt and I would like to nominate Dean Chalkant here for chair and Nathan Burks.
All right. So the nominee committee has asked Nathan and I to stay here. I will say that my first action as re-elected will be to put in term limits, but I'll accept another go-round.
I'll go vote on those.
Well, we have to vote on it, but I'm just saying as a candidate, I will accept. Sorry. All right. So the candidates are Chuck for chairman, do you say, to keep our positions? Okay, that's okay. Voting for status quo, if only we had that in the vote. Okay. Um, here we go. Those who would like to vote for the ballot, Chuck and Nathan, for chairman and vice chairman for future four-year term, please raise your right hand. All right. So that's unanimous. We'll also mention, guys, in case you were considering this, I haven't noticed the pay box, so just for future. So we now bring ourselves to the adjournment portion. Oh, actually, before I go, we all have two of our commissioners stepping off after this. Jeff and Nick, like the country, they all re-up busy lives and so forth. I know we can be aggravating, time-consuming. So we thank you for your service and we look forward to training your replacements. With that, I will ask for an adjournment.
I'll make a motion.
Probably put Jeff and Nick as token last votes. So Jeff and Nick are going in there. You have no objection there.
I do not.
Okay. And with that, I'll let you vote with your feet. So thank you, guys. We'll see you next time.